Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our board meeting. May I have your call, please, Mr. Snyder?
Mr. McCarroll.
Here.
Ms. Ms. Reeve.
Here.
Ms. Broseck.
Here.
Mr. Hess.
Here.
Professor Essing.
Here.
And this evening, we have some high school students who are going to help us with the pledge of allegiance.
Right here, Alyssa, come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, fantastic, alright.
Brad, would you like one?
You are number one.
Alright, beautiful. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being here this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce some of our rock star students. We have three Mayfield High School students and two outstanding staff members here this evening. So would our first student of the month, the Mayfield High School student we would like to recognize, Gianna Cindelli, can you please come up? Oh yeah, Gianna. So Gianna made a special trip here tonight because she has an indoor track meet at Spire, and she is leaving immediately after this, so we appreciate her. I just have some words and remarks. Gianna is a fantastic representation of Mayfield High School, and our resolution says, Gianna Cindelli, who's an 11th grader, is a true leader at Mayfield High School. She shows up each day with a positive attitude and a smile on her face. Gianna has taken on many leadership roles at Mayfield High School and was a sweep presenter for the Mayfield Hall of Fame Ceremony this year. Gianna has an impressive cumulative GPA of 4.26 at MHS and has challenged herself by taking four AP courses in her junior year. Gianna is also a leader outside of the classroom, is a member of CATS Cabinet, the Principal Advisory Committee, and was captain of the varsity A tennis team this year. Gianna's favorite memory at MHS was participating in Beauty and the Beast in her ninth grade year. Gianna's teachers absolutely rave about her. Mrs. Stevenson states, Gianna is a creative and artistically talented young lady who is a leader in her art classes, always coming with a positive attitude and ready to give her full effort in all that she does. Mr. Sullivan says, she is a wonderful student, always smiling, working, and embracing her education. Whether she is drawing, creating a presentation, or revising her written work, Gianna seizes all of her educational opportunities, an ideal student. Mrs. Thompson says, Gianna has a smile that lights up the world, exclamation point, exclamation point. We are grateful to have Gianna Cindelli at Mayfield High School and are proud to recognize her as one of our Mayfield High School Students of the Month at tonight's board meeting. Congratulations, Gianna Cindelli. Gianna, we need one more picture.
We need a picture. There we are. We need a picture.
And now I'd like to invite up this Jackie Baker. Baker is going to read our nomination for another outstanding student, Alyssa Claywell. Welcome, Miss Baker.
I have the pleasure of telling you all aloud, Alyssa Claywell. Alyssa is a wonderful example, a true MHS wildcat. She makes great connections with her peers and with teachers at Mayfield High School and at Delta. Alyssa participates in the teach program and is currently doing her internship in a first grade classroom at Laker Elementary School and leads by example each day. Alyssa's teachers describe her as a kind, polite, positive, respectful to all, and state that she is an absolute pleasure to have in class. Mrs. Zinnamay states, thanks to her hard work and cheerful personality, Alyssa never fails to write the option in our English III class. If Mr. Lynn ever messes up, which happens often, Alyssa will be sure to let him know. Alyssa is an amazing young lady, a true leader in every sense of the word, and we are truly fortunate to have her at Mayfield High School and proud to honor her at tonight's board meeting. Alyssa Claywell.
Mr. Hess, how are you doing, sir?
My wrestling coach. Thank you, sir.
And next, I'd like to call up Mrs. Deanna Elsing, our Director of Intervene, through consortium program to honor our next shining star, Ron Hubbard.
Meet Ron Hubbard, a shining star among Mayfield High School juniors. In the second quarter, Ron earned an impressive 3.06 GPA, showcasing his dedication to academic excellence. But Ron isn't just about hitting the books. He took center stage with a lead role in the MHS production of Rent during the first semester, captivating audiences with his talent and passion for the arts. Ron is not one to shy away from hands-on experiences. He actively participated in the Learn and Earn construction pathway, demonstrating a commitment to practical skills and real-world learning. What makes Ron's high school journey truly unique is his personalized approach. Balancing in-person classes with online classes, he's crafted an educational experience that suits his individual needs. Mr. Bolton states, there are not enough great things I can say about Ron. He comes to school every day upbeat, ready to work, and is always positive. He's willing to help others and is a great influence on his peers. Ron is just a great kid. Mrs. Elsing, that's me, applauds Ron's leadership, noting, Ronald leads by examples. I see it in the hallways, on the stage, and on field trips. I see it in the classroom, and I see it because you're such a good friend to your peers. I am so proud of this young man and his academic role. Ron Hubbard, a student who not only is learning to excel academically, but also enriches the Mayfield High School community with his talents, passion, and positive spirit. Ron Hubbard.
Ron, could you come back up, I see you're going to leave.
Not there yet. I didn't warm up.
Oh, okay. Ron's voice is amazing. If you did not see the show, oh wow. Well, thank you. And now it is my honor and privilege, we are so fortunate, we talk about the Mayfield family, that starts with our students, it starts with our family members, our community members, and it really, our staff is just so amazing here at the high school. So at this point in time, I would like to call Mr. Michael Corey, our Associate Principal in Charge of Curriculum and Analysis at the high school, to come to the stage. And I'm very honored that we have a very special honoree here tonight, Mrs. Sandy Smith. So, Michael. You can just tell, just how happy she is. So this is Mrs. Sandy Smith, and I have the honor of reading a few things about her. Mrs. Sandy Smith is the keystone of Mayfield High School's food service. She is a figure of quiet strength and unwavering commitment. As the high school cafeteria manager, she ensures that many students start their day right with breakfast, and stay fuelled through lunch. Her leadership is a beacon guiding her team to provide top-notch service, even when unexpected challenges arise, you know, like a pandemic, or power outages, or even wacky testing schedules. With a demeanor as steady as a rock and a focus sharp as a tack, she keeps students' wellbeing at the forefront. Mrs. Smith may not seek the spotlight, but her dedication and impact are deserving of recognition. Mayfield High School teacher Mrs. Sean Sindelar said, I can't think of anyone who has done more for our high school community than Sandy Smith. From COVID lunches, when she arranged for meals in and out of the school building, to working closely with our special education department, Mrs. Smith has done a phenomenal job leading our Mayfield High School cafeteria team. MHS Associate Principal Michael Corey, that's me, said, Mrs. Smith is absolutely critical to our excellence as a high school. She leads her team effectively and is always focused on what is best for students. Mayfield City School's Food Service Director, Robin Steele, said, Sandy has been high school manager for over 10 years and has worked every position in the kitchen. She goes above and beyond every day. She has had to cover as cook, cashier, and created a wonderful collaboration with our students and disabilities, and has arranged for them to help with some of the kitchen and prep duties. She is family and community focused, and her own children are Mayfield alumni, and she is loving her current role as grandma. Congratulations, Mrs. Sandy Smith. And last but not least, now I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our certified staff member of the month that we would like to highlight, Mr. Josh Hayes. So let me brag on Mr. Hayes a little bit. I'm not sure that he loves to spotlight, but I'm just happy he showed up tonight, so congratulations, Josh. We're so proud of you. I would like to celebrate the exceptional educator who has left a mark on the minds of his students. I present to you Mr. Josh Hayes. Mr. Hayes is not just a teacher, he is the driving force behind the success of our students in subjects like AP Government, Government, American History Through Film, Current World Issues, and Learn and Earn. His commitment to academic excellence is unmatched, as he guides our young minds through the details of these subjects. Assistant Principal Michael Corey noted that, quote, "Mr. Hayes is pushing the limits of academic rigor and practical preparation. He's dedicated to molding well-rounded, future-ready students who are ready for the next steps of their lives. Mr. Hayes is working hard to ensure that students are in the driver's seat, and he is someone who seeks to prepare the whole student for the next stage of life." Our staff and our students are appreciative of his efforts. So much so, that MHS senior student Dylan Sutcliffe said, "I liked American History Through Film so much, I asked my school counselor if I could take it again." This is now Mr. Hayes' points. Yes, your dad, maybe that would work out, I don't know. Mr. Hayes is not only a teacher, he's a visionary. By introducing the Learn and Earn Program at Mayfield High, and our local business partners, he's created a new pathway for our career-minded students, providing them with opportunities to thrive beyond the classroom. This innovative initiative showcases Mr. Hayes' dedication to shaping well-rounded individuals ready to conquer the challenges of the real world. Beyond the academic realm, Mr. Hayes is becoming a particular part of our athletic department. Athletic Director Mr. Leffler says, Josh's role as athletic events manager is pivotal to the success of the program. His presence and leadership go beyond the classroom walls, showing unwavering support for our student athletes. In the world of education, Mr. Josh Hayes is not just a teacher, he is a mentor, a guide, and a catalyst for success. Join us in recognizing and appreciating the exceptional contributions of Mr. Hayes as he continues to personalize learning for the future of our students and the legacy of our school. Congratulations, Josh. I hope you got a wide angle. There's a few. This is my group. I'll leave all that, I might go with all that.
Wait, 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 wait a second. Come on, coach.
All right, so my parents are also here. My dad also has to work in this building. Congratulations for our students and staff members. Just very proud of all of you. Thank you to the team, Ms. Baker, Mr. Corey, Mr. Stepanar. Say hi to the team, and you can be here for your presence. Mrs. Elsing, truly appreciate working with you each day. I'm really going to show a video that highlights some of the innovative things that are going on at Mayfield High School. And quickly before I move on, I just want to say, happy or appreciation month for the school board. None of this happens without you. I know how much work, hard work you put in. And I'll say this, today we got the opportunity, and I'm sure Dr. Barnes will reference it a little bit, to speak to educators from around the country, from three different states. And I don't think I've ever been more proud of Mayfield High School. You see some of the things come together, the staff, the students, Mrs. Smith was up there setting up the crew for us, and custodial staff worked hard, truly a team effort, and I think the people that left, the feedback was fascinating. I'm standing on the shoulders of giants for Mr. Legion being here before me, but the things that this board and, you know, Dr. Barnes has put in motion five to six years ago are bearing fruit. And they're bearing fruit. What some of the feedback, which was really powerful today, was our student panel, of which Ron was a part, and all of the people said, wow, your students are amazing, and we are so proud of them. Proud to be the principal here, it's truly the joy of my career to come back and be the principal here, so I want to thank you for that opportunity. We are, the only other thing I'll mention, we have two things, a lot of things in the hopper, but we do have an educational option showcase that's occurring on February 5th. We're in a competitive educational landscape, and the Mayfield story is so strong, we want to tell it loudly and proudly. It used to be kind of the eighth grade parent orientation night, it was a little old, and we were trying to jazz that out, so we're getting our students' grades nine through 11. It's going to be clubs, it's going to be sports, it's going to be activities, it's going to be AP, it's going to be options. So it's going to be a great time, so we're excited about that, and it's February 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And obviously, because we won't have another fourth event, we are targeting graduation on June 1st, so we are in the second semester, and we're excited to celebrate with our students and our community and all of you. So that being said, I won't be long-winded, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I'm going to press play and walk away. I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Brokmanis, Charlie Blumano, and the others who prepared this video very quickly, but it's high quality and part of the work, so thank you to them for that, and here we go. And I will say, this music is going to play throughout, so if you love the beat, it's about four minutes.
My favorite part was probably when we were at the other facility and we were talking about the robotic arms and how they help place up material, make the bins sports, make it easier for other people to like access it when they eat it.
My favorite part today, definitely seeing the robots.
Seeing all the robots. Playing with the robotic arm from our, the other student we were at today.
One other thing would be to see how like the robot arms are, I guess, like controlled, so I thought that was great.
That was definitely an awesome presentation, very cool, and I think that music's going to be playing in my headset.
It's stuck in your head.
Absolutely. So at this time, if people would like to take a little break, people who need to leave, they're welcome to. You want to stay? Oh, I'll accept. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to leave if you wish, before we get into the business part.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
I thought there was no way.
All right, getting back to the business at hand. Next, we have Community Communications. Nobody approached us ahead of time or just before the meeting, so there does not seem to be any today. So that moves us to President's announcements. I would just like to say, and I think that I, it would be fair to say that I'm going to speak to all of us, although it is Board Member Honors Month, we all feel very honored to serve you. So thank you. So that is the end of my announcement.
Thank you, Madam President. As Mr. Lynn mentioned, the month of January is Board Appreciation Month. And the state of Ohio, I have a little statement here with some student remarks that I'd like to read for the board. First of all, we collectively thank you for your countless hours you dedicate to our students, teachers, staff, and community of Mayfield City Schools. Your dedication, care, and vision cannot be measured. Some of our teachers asked our students to voluntarily write a thank you note to thank you for the work you do for our schools. Here's what our students said, excerpts from Mayfield's students to the Board of Education. One, thank you for making an impact on my learning and others. We genuinely recognize the impact that you have made towards our learning. Wholeheartedly receive your hard work and dedication to your jobs. Our learning has drastically improved because of your dedication to our schools. Second excerpt, we appreciate all that you do for the students and staff. Mayfield is a great place because of you. Thank you so much for making Mayfield a great place to learn and for supporting our education. And lastly, thank you for providing us with such devoted teachers and staff members who work their hardest to care for our students. Thank you for putting your hearts and soul into our work. Thank you. Thank you for everything you do.
Again, I say it is our honor, so thank you. Okay, so next we move to the Focus Forward Mayfield Pillar update.
Oh, yeah, that's me. We had a couple of community members show up today for the coffee talk. We had conversations about community, and conversations about the recent surveys that were sent out to student staff and community, how we plan to communicate out the findings from those surveys. The idea here is to identify the three areas that we're doing well, the three areas where we can get better, and then we'll put some action steps in place to address those areas where we can improve with the focus of implementation for the 24-25 school year. You know, all of the improvement science talk about, or speak to, the need for organizations to continue to assess where they're at now, the trend. This is just that iteration for us. We're always looking to get better, and we will. Thank you.
That moves us to Board Member Committee Reports. Are there any reports?
Hey, Madam President, we put the committee reports under a separate place for a reminder of the committees that were approved at the last organizational meeting a few weeks ago. So we can decide moving forward if in fact we want to maintain that listing, or just simply include that committee that we recently met. That way they will be prepared to present to the committee. So I guess it's just, well, it's not a stylistic question. We can have this conversation maybe after February, and if that works.
Yep. Okay, that moves us to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Motion to approve items 830.
So move. Second.
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Madam President, if I may just mention, Nate Mead, the Allen Pass Medical Secretary of the district since 2003, and she's retiring. And we just want to take a moment to just wish her well, her next sentence. Thank you.
That moves us to other Superintendent's Business and Fueling Brains Agreement. Motion to approve.
So move. Second. If I might, I'd just add, this is another intent for us to work to develop executive functioning skills for our students. Transitions is part of a priority and focus for Mayfield. This organization is going to help assist with that. There's been some really good work in the preliminary, and we're looking forward to continued partnership.
Next up, we have the Mayfield High School baseball. I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Now, next up. We have the Mayfield High School baseball and softball team trip to Destin, Florida. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have some of our end of understanding between COVID County Board of Health and Mayfield City Schools. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
I did want to take a moment to say this is an agreement that we had also in the past for a point of distribution, which I think people were a lot more aware of during COVID, but it is something that has been ongoing and will continue to be active.
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have the approval of the 2024-2025 Excel Tech Program Fees. Motion to approve. Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
That moves us to the Treasurers' Report and the Financial Statements for December 31st, 2023. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Under donations, we are splitting apart. So we have the first donation that we are going to approve separately from the other two. So I need a motion just for that first donation.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
So that first one was actually highlighted, thus the extension. So that is why we separated it out. The next two donations, motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
That moves us to other Treasurers' Business and the minimum wage increase for 2024. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 20th, the special board meeting of January 5th, and the organizational meeting of January 10th. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
So Mr. Panaro moved, and Mr. Hess seconded. Thank you.
Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Moving us to the College Credit Plus Primary Partnership Agreement. Making college for 2024-2025. Motion to approve. Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have the PSI Affiliates Incorporated for St. Francis of the CC School for the fiscal year of 2023-2024.
So move. Second.
Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
And the Amendment to the Burns Pool Management Agreement, originally approved 11/25. This is a change.
Clarification to the original contract, yes. It is a change.
Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have Board Policies, Final Leading and Adoption. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second. And I will say that with board policies, we have almost a lot of, a lot of times it has to do with legal changes. There's a lot of our policy is embedded in state statute. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Next, we have the adoption of the Mayfield Way Core Values. Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Madam President, if I may just quickly speak to this. Appreciate the board's consideration of these core values that we call the Mayfield Way. This has been the work by students, faculty, staff, parents, administration over the past year. And it felt it was important that when we talk about the Mayfield Way, we've so often said, it's hard to describe it when you know it and to see it and to feel it. But we thought it was important to define this as part of our work, when new teachers come again, we introduce them to the way in which we do business here. There's three things we've never done missing: our mission, our vision, and our values. And so we're excited that we're considering passing this resolution today. It just keeps aligning the organization towards our quest for excellence.
Personally, I love it, and I love the fact that it's a first, that it's possible. Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? Mr. Panaro?
Last, please.
I'd like to thank our service departments, all four of our service departments, our brown people, the bus drivers for their work yesterday during the ice storm, with the kids just still safely. Those ice men, that ice man that took care of the streets very well after the road was back there. So I appreciate everything they've done to make sure we're ready. We had school yesterday, and it was just like, thank you.
With that, a motion to adjourn.
So move. Seconds.
Roll call?
Ms. Reeve? Ms. Rosek? Mr. Hess? Mr. Tressi? And Mr. Panaro?